Yeah.
Well, hi, everybody. It's about five after six. I think we should get started. It looks like we have board members all here. Um, and so I think that we should just call the meeting and have a roll call of council members to establish a quorum, please. So I'll call on board members. Chelsea?
Here.
Tricia?
Here.
Laurel?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
And Monica McDaniel is here, and it seems like it's ever Vicky. I forgot Vicky.
Vicky, Monica is here.
Thank you. I was like, somebody's missing.
Amber Brown, Monica.
And Amber Brown. Amber, are you are new? Are you a new person to to we were that we were going to talk about approving for the board, a new parent position? Okay, thank you. So let's have our invocation.
Monica, I think she's already approved and part of the board. That happened at the meeting you missed.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. Well, nice to meet you, Amber. So Amber, go ahead and say your thank you.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So Amber, I'm gonna call on you to read the invocation since you're our newest member. No pressure.
What am I reading? Sorry.
The school invocation is right on the agenda?
Oh, got you. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school, love of life itself. Let us remember that as our hand build a house, so many hearts build a school.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, and so it's time for agenda modifications. We do have one request for agenda modifications that we got an email from this afternoon. Susan or Brianna, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, we have Senora Swerjen here, our Spanish teacher, to do the faculty report. And she just, we were hoping she could do it earlier in the meeting.
So faculty report is normally item 4.1. And when would you like her to do it? Maybe right after audience to address the council or maybe right after consent agenda?
That would be lovely.
Okay, so I moved to move to move 4.1 to right after 2.6. Sound good? Do other board members concur?
Yes.
Okay, great. Faculty. Okay, great. Are there any audience to address the council at this time? Oh, any other agenda modifications before we move on? That's the only one I knew about. Did anybody else know of any other ones? Okay, is there any audience to address the faculty to address the council? I'm gonna wait for someone to tell me, or let's see, I can look at participants.
I don't see any hands up or any comments.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Seha. Okay, great. So then we'll move on to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda has a number of items on it. Like Chelsea reminded us, I wasn't at the last meeting, so so it looks like everything is pretty up and up. Is there any items from the consent agenda that any board members would like to discuss or remove? Or do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
Jim, can you answer a question for me? We have the first interim. Should that be its own item rather than in the consent agenda? I just thought of that this afternoon.
I mean, it's it's up to the board. It it's reporting the January update, so it does have to be approved. It'd be approved through consent. Yeah, I like the idea of actually moving it to an action item.
Okay, yes.
So can I ask Monica that we move the interim reports off of the consent agenda and approve it separately?
Item 2.3 to be removed from the consent agenda. Okay. That was Susan. Any any objections from board members? Okay, all right, that sounds good. Any other items from the consent agenda that we should be considered separate from this motion? No? Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to to accept the consent agenda?
Monica, this is Chelsea, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks, Chelsea. I saw Laurel, I saw your hand up. I can't see any other board members. So first by Chelsea Parker, second by Laurel Hill Ward. Any further discussion about the items on the consent agenda? Okay, then let's have a vote. I'm gonna expand my thing so I can see everybody to call on everybody. Okay, Amber?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm a visual person. I have to write your name down and remember. Okay, uh, let's go back over here. Laurel?
Hi.
Chelsea?
Hi.
Vicky? Laura?
Hi.
Oh, we didn't hear Chelsea's eye. Is that okay? Is that acceptable?
We heard it.
Okay. Okay, Tricia?
Hi.
And Monica McDaniel, I. Okay, so do we want to talk about the interim report first? But since it's a consent agenda item?
Susan? Yes, if Jim, if you could say a few words about what they're approving, I think it would be helpful.
Sure. So the interim report is one of two mid-year check-ins. This is the second interim. The financial update through January. So the board did previously receive the financial presentation through January, so this is that same information. Just updated while that comes to the board every month. This is the check-in point for the authorizer and the and the state. And so this is providing that information to the state. And then the actuals and then the forecast as of the January model where the year will end. Asserting the financial strength of the school for this year and tentatively for the next two years. Obviously, the the next two-year budget won't, we won't be working on that until not that long, you know, about 45 days. But just positive certification of the financial status of the school through January and forecast for the year.
This is Chelsea. I just wanted to note that Finance Committee has reviewed and discussed this, and it is our position that we recommend the board approve.
Okay, so with that recommendation, do I hear a motion about item 2.3?
I will make a motion. This is Chelsea. I would like to make a motion that we accept and approve the second interim report.
And this is Tricia. I'll second that.
Great, thank you. We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so then we'll have a roll call or a vote. Chelsea?
I.
Tricia?
I.
Laurel?
I.
Amber?
I.
Laura?
I.
Vicky?
I.
And Monica McDaniel, I. Okay, great, thank you. So let's move on to, and thanks for for that that update, Jim. Let's move to item 4.1 faculty report, please. Senora Swerjen?
Gracias, thank you. I was wondering, first of all, I was wondering if I can share my my screen with you because I made a slideshow.
Yes, give me one minute.
Gracias, thank you. It's a it's a real pleasure to meet you, everybody, and I am very excited to show a little bit of what we have we have been doing in our Spanish classes. Let's go to say that this 2020 and what is going of 2021 have been really particular years. So I like to call it like a Spanish in the time of COVID. In an inspiration of Gabriel Garcia Marquez's book, Love in the Times of COVID. I don't know if you are familiar with that book, but yes. Okay. Alex?
I think you should be able to share now. Do you want to go ahead and try?
Yes, thank you. Un momento, por favor. Okay, good. Well, welcome to my little report of what is going on in in Spanish this year. Like I say, this is career have been very particular. The thing is that required a lot of flexibility in all senses. Be a real team player with the teachers, with the school community. And we need to adjust our schedules for what is going on. The I don't know if you know that Spanish classes are just in the Zoom meeting mode. So for this year, I just have 30 minutes per week, per grade of Spanish classes. Something that I would like to remind you is what is the general objective for teaching Spanish in a well-known school? To facilitate of the learning of Spanish and to develop abilities to communicate in the language. To assist in developing trust in self and others when facing the unknown. To develop the capacity for understanding and acceptance of a different culture, promoting and generating a feeling of brotherhood amongst human beings. To discover other point of view by acquiring the ability to reflect on aspects of one's own culture. To develop a deepened capacity for thinking and willing through exposure, immersion of the Spanish language. And to develop supporting learning conditions among several disciplines. To foster interest in the future participation of students in local and international multilingual communities. So what we are trying to do with Spanish is that in those 30 minutes, immerse the student in the Spanish culture, not just about the language, but in all the areas of when when you think about culture, we are talking about the food, the ways how we speak, the music, fun projects, try to celebrate important dates and have projects like a Dia de Muertos that later I am going to show you. Also, try to take them in a imaginative travel to the different countries of Latin America, even that they can think that they are kind of archaeologists in a way. When I am showing, for example, to the eighth graders some archaeological places in Latin America. So that is what I am trying to do. And something really great that we have been doing in the school this year is that, like you did in the beginning, we have the school morning verse. Well, we already have two weeks reading on Tuesdays the school morning verse in Espanol. So in that way is another another time that the students can practice the Spanish pronunciation. And they know already the verse in English, so it's fun just to repeat the verse in Espanol. Okay, I am going to show you some example of what have been going on in our classes. For example, in first grade, we we have been teaching the children about the greetings, yes, how you make friends with people that speak another language. We have been talking about the family, their favorite pets or animals that they live with, and what is the name of those animals in Espanol? The basic about colores, the different ways to communicate in easy sentences in Espanol. For second grade, we have been already working, we continue working with the colores with numbers that they can, they are able to count around the house in using the numbers in Espanol. Working with activities like a infal activity, they can also create their body parts with leaf. And then in that way, it's fun for them to write the names of the part of the body, like a cabeza, ojos, boca. And with this group, I have been talking about animals in the jungle. And right now, we are working with different ways to greet each other and to say, how do you feel in Espanol? ¿Cómo estás? ¿Cómo te sientes? See? With the third graders, we are talking about in the beginning of the year, we are talking about the seasons, animal of the farm, more in detail, part of the body, the senses, yes, and part of the house and part of the Mexican culture. This one I start to talk about in September, like Independence of Mexico different costumes in this area. For fourth grade, we are talking about the weather. And in with the animals, I talk about Antarctica, the animals that live in the tundra in the jungle, in the in the sea, in the oceans. And I like to teach a lot of poetry, a lot of songs and movement when I am teaching with the lower graders. That is part of the Waldorf philosophy. In fifth grade, like you see, I have been already talking about botany. And we talk about the trees, part of the trees, the leaf, the flower, the nature. And we are start to use more grammar in the sentences. So that they are able to construct small sentences using the subject, verb, the noun, verb, and the the other part of the sentences. I use a lot of poems also for this. And this one also I start to talk about use of the verbs in Espanol, not just in present tense. For the sixth graders, we start to talk more about what is around the school, like the school schedule, how they feel, how to write sentences or say sentences about their feelings. Yes? We start to really conjugate more the verbs. Talk about what we what are the things that they like or dislike? And start to explore Latin America as a whole culture. And we talk about the food, about the people, about the geography of Latin America, in what is similar and different each country in Latin America, archaeological places, a lot of music, they really like that part. For sixth, seventh grade, I start to dedicate that grade for to teach about the Spanish culture. Because there is where the Spanish language is originate. And the correct way to say, there is not the correct way to say Spanish. The correct way to say the name of the language is Castilla. Is how we say in Latin America that we speak Castilla. We don't say we speak Espanol, is saying. So I show the geography of Spain, the culture, the the cities most more important in Spain, like Madrid, Barcelona, Valencia, Sevilla, a lot of the culture, a lot of the great writers and poetry that is in Spain. And right now, we are starting to read about Don Quixote. For the oh, and I don't know if you want to, I put this websites. If you would like to check some of the homework that they have been doing. So you can see the writing. I don't know if we have enough time to to do that. No?
Maybe you can send me the the slideshow after tonight, and then I can share it with the board if they'd like to check it out after the meeting.
I would really appreciate that. I'd love to see it.
Yes. Yes. Okay, with A grader, we come back to study Latin America, but more in depth, like the pre-Spanish civilizations that exist before the colonization. And I give a lot of importance to for them to study how was the Aztec, the Mayan, the Incas, what are the great the great things that they led for the whole world, especially about food? When the colonization happened, what kind of food we took to Europe? And they write also a lot of sentences. I love for them to do like a mini biographies of different personalities in Latin America, not just singers or actors or actresses, but that they also can explore who is a writer, painters, astronauts, people from the science, from science. And one of the biggest presentations or projects that we have in the beginning of the year around October, November is the Dia de Muertos. This is something that it has been very different this year with the COVID and the distant learning mode. Because they don't have the facility that we have in other years that they bring to a school their projects. And for example, for first, for sixth grade, this year, they did the mini Altares de Muertos. The mini altars are a representation of a real-life altar where they dedicate this altar to a loved one that passed away. Is that if the subject is too touchy for the family, I also give them the option to dedicate this mini altar to their pets, the animals, or they can choose a famous person that passed away and dedicate the altar for them. So this is some of the works that the children bring this year. With the, pardon, with the seventh graders, I teach them how to do calacas or catrinas. These are kind of dolls. It could be made with any kind of material, like you see, some of them make it with a Barbie doll or with clay. Or they draw the Katrina, or they paint a pumpkin as a Katrina, and they need to write why they create that that Katrina. I ask them to give the Katrina a name, a life, what the Katrina loved to do if if she was or he was a real character. I love that they use their imagination to create that Katrina. And for the A graders, I ask them to do to write calaveritas literarias. And what is calaveritas literarias? Well, this is the time that I ask them, teenagers just love it, because this is the time that I ask them, okay, I want that you be sarcastic, writing something about them. And I know that sounds weird, but it's like a just write something, recreate a funny story about that involve and something that happened to a person and the person just pass away, but in a very sacrificial, funny way, in a good in in a good way. So they wrote their stories. And how we do this is that they write the first draft in in English, so they can get the idea. And little by little, we are going to translate the sentences until they have the whole story. So this is, like I say, just a little bit of what we have been doing in Espanol. There is a lot of projects to come for the rest of the year, like food trucks. They also need to make menus of restaurants. And they can choose a country that they want to explore, what kind of food they eat in Peru or Mexico or Chile, Argentina, so they can create the menu. And that is another fun way that they can learn the Spanish language and more vocabulary. So do you have questions? I hope that you like. I try to summarize everything.
Muchas gracias, señora Swerjen.
Oh, gracias a ustedes.
It looks like a very rich, wonderful curriculum. And that takes hard work, and so we thank you for your hard work, too.
Oh, thank you. I really love the kids. Like I say in the beginning, this is Spanish in the times of COVID. So it has been very different the way how we teach the language, because I say that the first way to teach a language is in person, just having the personal experience with the teachers or with the culture. And sometimes teaching through the Zoom is is a little bit cold. And I like to be funny with them and be playful. But you need to add that. So I think that the big learning lesson of these times that you need to be flexible, you need to adapt, and you need to do the best of everything. And that is what I say to the kids, just do your best. Little, a lot, but enjoy what you are doing. Gracias.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I love faculty report part of the meeting. That's always my favorite part. What are the kids doing? Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Does anybody have any final questions for Senora Swerjen? No? Okay. All right, let's move on to section three, item 3.1 Finance Committee Report. Chelsea?
Yes, hi. It was a good meeting we had. And we reviewed and approved of this or recommended the second interim budget. The big, the big thing that we discussed at the meeting, and it's still just in the discussion phase, is the salary scales. Obviously, with minimum wage increases going up again next year, that means adjustments of our salary scales. And it's more complex than just pushing the bottom and, you know, having those increases go all the way across. So we're working on that and revisiting and discussing those to ensure that, you know, we are compensating our employees appropriately. And we've also been working on putting together with as part of that, an administrative salary scale, which we have not yet had. So that'll be the last of the the salary scales. We developed the certificated and the classified salary skills, and then the administrative is the last to do. And so it's very exciting work. Other than that, that's that's the big news.
That is very exciting work, and it's I I can't, I thank you. That's really huge. I can't, I thank you. That's really huge. Any questions for Chelsea? You know, I've, I've been packing up my house to move you guys. And so I keep finding all these Blue Oak things. And just reliving so much. And so hearing this forward movement just means so much to me. So thank you. Okay, so let's move on. Any questions for Chelsea before we move on? Okay, so let's move on to 3.2 Parent Council Report, Tricia.
Hello, everybody. I was actually not at parent council. I was out of town during that meeting. So I don't really, and the minutes haven't come out for it yet. So I know that they were going to continue their conversations about Mayfair. And that's all I really know. So sorry.
And I noticed when I looked over the notes that Amber, you're, you are or were a member of parent council. Did you attend that meeting or can you fill us in on any information?
No, I didn't attend it. I had another parent email me and say they were going to do it. So.
True. That's, that's fine. That's fine. It's exciting to hear the murmurings of Mayfair. You know, I'm excited to see how that comes out. So thank you. Okay, let's go to 3.3 Policy Review. We have two policies to discuss tonight and Susan, you have the floor.
Okay, two policies. The first one is one we've been working on this year because of course our increase in use of technology. It seemed important to have a policy that fit that. This has gone to both the technology group and of staff that discusses that. And it's also gone to the pedagogical team in order to look at how we integrate the technology we're using and how that fits with the Waldorf instruction. So the idea is to honor the fact that it is important in this day and age, but still hold to the importance that technology is not our primary way of instructing in a Waldorf school. So as a policy, this is your first read. If you have any questions, we can bring them up and we'll do our second read next month.
Again, Susan, I just really appreciate you and your, your staff's work on all of these policies. And I know it's a lot of work, but it is really great to have them in place. So thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
I believe the artwork that's on the side is actually a picture of a student's stitch work. And just, isn't that adorable?
Yes, I really like it. And Susan's work is very good too. Yeah, I was wondering about that. Okay, so any questions or comments about technology and instruction? Before we prove it? Because this is the second read. Did you, I'm sorry.
This is first read, I believe.
First read, okay. So any questions before we move it on that we can anything you notice that needs to be adjusted or anything before it comes back to us for our vote? Okay, I'm hearing crickets. So let's move on to the next one about board governance standards, please. And Ms. Sayha, you're, you're monitoring the hands up.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this actually, thanks to my breakthrough coaching, training and and the expectation that I clean out my desk, I found this. And this was something that was written a number of years ago by the board. But we don't show that it was ever approved or put into the bylaws. So brought it back, did a couple of changes to it. But overall, this felt like really good wording about the really the governance standards that Blue Oak has practiced in the past and wants to continue to practice.
Any questions or comments about the board governance standards? And Susan, I heard you say we had this before us once before, and then we didn't bring it, have a chance to bring it back. So this is this, is this technically the second read or are we starting over for the reads on this particular?
No, this was, this was like back in 2017. So you know, when the, the board was addressing these issues very strongly at the time, it was written. But we don't show that it was actually ever approved by the board. So this is the first read. And of course, you're a new board anyway, so you'd want to read it twice.
Fresh eyes. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Susan, this is Chelsea. The only thing on here that I saw that jumped out at me was the fundraising section that says to develop a plan and conduct annual fundraising events. Um, I, I'm not sure that that is a function of the board as it reads.
So maybe support annual fundraising events rather than conduct?
Yeah. And, and even if like the expectation is that we'll approve those large fundraising events or anything like that. But I just, I mean, I've been on the board for a while and I feel like we don't develop fundraising events or conduct them. So unless that's going, something big is going to change. I feel like leaving that in the hands of the people who do it much better and have that skill set is the appropriate thing to do.
Thanks. Thank you, Chelsea. That's a good edit. We will adjust that to be more just in a supportive role rather than an actual doing role.
Perfect. Yeah, I just think about, you know, successive boards and looking, you know, if somebody were to read this, like, oh, the board's not doing their job. So.
No, don't want that.
Yeah, good, good catch, Chelsea. And you can throw an event. Yeah, Vicki?
As I was reading this, I have not been on campus in such a long time. It's been well over a year. So I'm failing in that one.
Well, considering we probably wouldn't let you on campus if you came, Vicki, that's, that's probably not your fault. We do want to bring up the opportunity next month to start having our board meetings on campus again, of course socially distanced with the board and then zooming. Anyone who wants to, to attend the meeting other than the board would zoom in. But we're starting to feel like that sense of being in the same room to make a decision is being missed. So Chelsea had asked us to consider it for this month. We just couldn't make it happen in time, but I would like the board to consider that we would come back on campus for future board meetings.
I also want to, did I not read in the minutes that Chelsea brought that up last month also?
Probably, Monica, I will.
Yeah, during our governance section of the agenda, it looks like.
I will just be honest that it, it's came very quickly. Then we had spring break and and Alex and I looked at each other and said, we're not ready to do that this tomorrow. So wanting to, to let the whole board be aware of that, that hopeful change for next month.
Laurel, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'm wondering if maybe it's hitting me in a particularly busy season with seven day a week work. I'm wondering if it might be possible to do to zoom into the on-campus meeting too.
To have hybrid board members possibly, Laurel?
Yeah, to have a hybrid meeting.
That is still because of the COVID expectations. That hasn't, that is still an option as those legal requirements of the Brown Act have not changed at this point.
That's a yes, correct?
That's a yes, Laurel, in a very legalese way. Just, just a yes enough so that you're not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I noticed that like city council has, you know, they're all in person, but everybody else is zoomed. And they're all distanced and masked and everything. So it is, it is different having everybody in the same room. So yeah, I'm sorry that I didn't make it to the agenda. So we couldn't possibly, because I'm worried that we're going to run out of meetings to have, even if we do pass it. So, so if, can we please make sure that that's on the next agenda? I mean, is, is that as far as the conversation can go today? Any other comments or questions about this one?
I just had a question under.
Oh, go ahead, Laura.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I had a question under Board Business and Succession Planning. It talks about conducting a board self-evaluation. And I was just wondering if that's something that we should be doing. Cause I don't, in my time on the board, I don't think we've done that. And I'm curious about it.
We have not done that, Laura. Again, I found these and thought this was the intent of the board four years ago and we should bring that forward. I think a self-evaluation at the end of the year would be good to do.
And I like that these were written during a time after a conflict at the school. So people were really hyper, like, you know, it's kind of like when the constitution was written, you know, it was a response to some other thing. So they really thought, and I remember the people who were on the board at this time, and they were very thoughtful and thorough. And so I like that we have this already as a structure with very, that's got a lot of details to it. And I think a board self-examination would be excellent. I always think that's a good idea.
Um, so my question was about the in-person meetings. Do we need to have it on the agenda to vote? So then we're not going to be able to do it till May or can we say we're going to do it for April?
Yeah, I kind of had the same question, Susan. Does that have to be voted on by the board or is that, can that be an administrative decision?
Yeah, just an option.
I think we can present it as an option, that this is what we're asking them. It's acceptable now for the board to be in person and that that could be an option. So we can set up for you to come to school, continue to have the public on the Zoom. And then it would still also allow for Laurel, for example, to continue to zoom from home. If that works better for her and is safer for her.
Great.
Great. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions about the board governance standards and its first read? I will look forward to seeing this again also. Okay, so then I think it's time to move to item 3.4 or revisit informal complaint process. And Susan, you still have the floor on that?
Yes. Last month, we brought this forward as there's of course the uniformed complaint procedure, which is for formal complaints. But often the concerns that come up, most of them are much less formal than that. It's really a discussion, a question and that, and so forth. Last month, we brought you a form that said everything went through the classroom teacher first. And Brianna brought up as a concern at that point, even though she was part of writing it, she realized that probably that wasn't the best. So she and I revisited that. And so that first line of when you have a question or concern, take the following steps first for resolution or understanding. And added to that, to bring your concern to the appropriate personnel, such as your classroom teacher, specialist teacher, facility or front office staff. So those would be the first step before you then, if you can't get a good answer there, bring it on to administration and from there, go to the board chair and so on. So so that was the main area that we changed from last time. So I wanted you to take a look at that.
It badly needs a comment of when you have a question or concern, comma, take the following steps.
We will make that edit. Thank you, Laura.
It's a dependent clause. You could move it to the end of the sentence. It's good where it is, but it needs a comma.
Love having teachers on my board.
Monica, you're on mute.
Sorry, my mom keeps calling. So I'm trying to spare everybody. Any other questions or comments about, about this document? As everybody had a chance to read it through, it was my other question. So I don't want to rush everyone along. I want to make sure everyone's had ample time to review it. And, okay, and if any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for that, for reviewing that, Susan. And the last thing on the governance section is the COVID-19 update.
So that's. Do you need us to vote and adopt the informal complaint process document?
No, it's just a process document I wanted the board to be aware of.
Okay, great.
Go into procedures and from there into the parent handbook and so on.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks for asking, Chelsea.
So, okay. So wanted to, things are changing fairly quickly with COVID as we're getting used to. And I asked Alex to put this on the agenda because I knew that we would have an update, changes and things to discuss. So I think that you are probably all aware that Bucay County has dropped from the purple to the red tier that they are holding there the last two weeks pretty solidly at lower numbers. So see at least for now, staying in that that area in that tier, we also, they have a significant number of adults who have been vaccinated. They are now have dropped the age limit to 50 and above getting vaccines. The schools have all been through the process of getting vaccines. And now farmers and farm workers are also being vaccinated. So and grocery store clerks. So again, Buchanan is working very well in, in taking the steps necessary to keep the COVID cases down and is, and is being successful in that. We do appreciate everyone's work in the community on that. So with that, the other thing that came up just recently, I believe Monday, was that the CDC with the support of the California Department of Health have reduced the distancing in schools down to three feet. So that students only need to be, it's considered safe for students to be three feet apart. We had in our last approval at this board, dropped our number from six to four. And when we did that, we were able to with a lot of work from our facilities department, get most of the classes fully on, in class in one classroom. We attempted for a couple of weeks, what we call dual classrooms with a teacher teaching students in two classes. That immediately became obvious that that wasn't a really good working out for the students or the teacher. So we luckily were able to move fairly quickly to having all the students in one class. And so we have that now throughout the school. That's allowed us to bring all students from hybrid that into hybrid that have wanted hybrid. And so we're sitting, I asked Smaki to run the numbers today. We're sitting at about 72% of our students are now on campus with the 28% remaining full distance learning. So of course on campus is the hybrid, four hours a day, four days a week, and then Friday distance learning. Continuing, we have had no reported transmissions at the school site. So we haven't had a need to put into effect any of those issues around closing to isolate children or anything like that. issues around closing to isolate children or anything like that. So we've been very appreciative of that at the school. The vigilance, of course, as far as hand washing, face mask wearing, social distancing when appropriate is still important. We do have, because 90% of our staff are vaccinated, we are able to have some meetings together without face masks. But for the most part, we are still using those face masks and we are still social distancing and doing Zoom meetings for the most part. I have received a couple of, some questions from parents and others about whether or not we would more fully open the school. There are, of course, the mental health concerns that we have heard of before. And the fact that these are some pretty major hurdles that the community and the school have overcome in the past few months. And so of course, there have been some questions about whether or not we'll increase hours on campus. They, let's see. We have some issues we would need to work out for that around feeding the children, how to do specialties, how to deal with shared spaces like the great room and the outdoor play areas. So we're really not ready to make a proposal about this at this time. And I, I don't know, Buck, are you here tonight? Were you able to make it? I don't, I can't see it. So.
He's there. Yes. Yep.
Okay. Buck, did you want to make any comments on that? The issues around reopening further, any concerns that you have at this point?
No, my concerns are just the groups of children like you were talking about, Susan, and sanitizing if we need to be on the outdoor areas, indoor as well. Indoor be more of a concern than outdoor. I'm leaning towards, I can't really tell what I'm leaning towards. We need a little more time passed before they make a decision on that, obviously, for giving a proposal together. So my concerns are just the, the large groups and cohorts, you know, are we staying cohorts or not? It's still recommended that we stay in cohorts, even though we're down to three feet spacing. So that could be the transition between classes or recesses and such, if you go longer in lunch, like you were talking about. I don't know how we, we have to talk about that.
And thank you, Buck. I wanted them to hear your voice in this too. I think some of these changes have happened just in a very short period of time as they do. And so we're really not ready to establish a proposal as to how or if that would work at this point. So, so that's where we are. If the board would like to discuss it further, we can schedule a special meeting. And I can bring the team together to start discussing that if you're into, if you would like to.
How is the board feeling about that? Do we want to have a special meeting for COVID or is the update enough? And we maybe want to see what's going on next month. Laurel?
I feel like things have changed just in what's allowable and we might continue to see those changes. They're testing the vaccine on children right now. And I think as much as we wanted to know and as much as we want to keep things safe, I think this is a good time to trust our administrator's judgment, Susan's judgment, about when she needs to bring us together. Many of these decisions are not ours, the three feet, decisions about masks. And I think not just Susan, but the entire staff can be trusted to be at all times doing what they think is best. So I'd wait. If you want to convene us, convene us.
Okay, thanks, Laurel. So one, one kind of recommendation to wait to hear from Susan. Any other opinions that you want to share around this?
And this is Tricia. I would agree. Yeah, I would agree with Laurel that, you know, letting them kind of make that decision and when we need to be involved.
Letting us know. Thank you. And Amber?
I do agree that, you know, they need to process the information because there has been a lot that came out. But I do think there is a sense of urgency to have a discussion about it. So I, you know, just to represent the parents and that they want to make sure that we are talking about it and moving forward and making, you know, adjustments if we can, if we're serving, making sure we're serving all the students that we can. So I agree that logistically, that, that has to be administration. But I do want, I do feel there's an urgency to continue to discuss it before our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Chelsea?
And I appreciate the update very much, Susan. I, I agree with Amber that keeping us on the forefront. I also agree with Laurel that many of these decisions aren't ours to make. However, I feel like board meetings surrounding this topic do allow for the appropriate place for our community members, like our school community members to be able to speak on behalf of their students and to be heard. And so I, I do think that it's worthwhile to have a meeting, even if it's just to discuss maintaining status quo based on the current information. I mean, even if it's not to make changes, just to make sure that we are creating a space for that. I do, I do agree that that's important. And then in addition to that, I did have a quick question. I understand that adding additional transitions and mealtimes and such is a big challenge. Has, has it been considered to reinstate?
We lost your sound. You know that.
Sorry, to reinstate on campus for Fridays. Has there been any discussion for that? To, to do the same hours as Monday through Thursday, but open the campus on Fridays?
If there have at this point been specifically those discussions, Chelsea, as we bring the team together to discuss it, that of course would be one of the options we would look at.
Excellent. Thank you.
Laura, Vicky?
Do we have a lot of students on waiting lists?
No, we have no students on waiting lists at this point.
So that means that everybody who wants a spot has a spot?
Everybody who wants to be on campus or in the hybrid program is in the hybrid program. Those who, so we, and that's the 72% of the student body. So the question is not whether or not we can get more students onto campus for those four days a week at four hours a day, but whether or not we want to increase to five days or include afternoons and how that would work at this point.
I just wanted to add, I know Buck mentioned the cohort, but I thought that depending on what tier you were in, that that sort of went away. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That was once upon a time when the governor first established it, that was a process. But with his changing of the tiered system over the year, that's no longer a part of it.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing lots of, lots of similar comments, but also I'm hearing a couple of board members want to make sure they have a meeting already in place before the next meeting. Other board members said they're willing to wait until Susan calls a meeting. Do you want to take a vote about whether or not we want to have a board meeting before the April meeting or not? Or whether we want to wait for Susan to do it? How we want to handle this situation? So I don't want to move forward if some people are wanting to establish a meeting and other people think it's okay to wait.
Monica, I'm not sure it would be appropriate to actually vote on it because then we're putting it kind of in, in parity with an item. And the public may want to weigh in that, you know, on that, you know, the public may feel that, that both opinions need to be swayed by something they have to say. So I don't know that a vote's appropriate.
I, I think, Monica, what I am taking is my direction from the, the board comments is that you would like us to go ahead and meet as a staff in that meeting and discuss what options might be made to increase the number of hours we're on campus and what that would look like. And then I can get back to the board and have Alex schedule an additional meeting if that seems like an appropriate way to go. And one way or another, I will do a report to the board on what the team discusses.
What's the timeline like on that? When does the team meet again?
Well, the team doesn't right now have a meeting scheduled, Vicky. So we will have to schedule a meeting. I would say it would take at least two weeks for us to get a meeting scheduled and do any decent amount of work. So.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, then even if we schedule an extra meeting, it might be too soon to get inputs. So we should wait.
Yeah, you know, and it will, it's, right now, what will probably be happening for the rest of this week is a lot of discussion about, from charter leaders and superintendents about what this all means. And that's all information on how different schools are approaching this. And that's all information I would want to have before I asked the board to meet again and discuss that. So.
All right.
We're getting kind of good at figuring out as a community, Buchanan community, how to address this amazingly fluid situation.
Right, right. Yeah. Well, that, that sounds great to me. Are all, are board members in general consensus that that's okay? Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I'm okay with waiting and/or if we need an extra meeting at the appropriate time with all the info in place, then the meeting is okay too.
Yeah, right. I think we're all okay about that. Perfect.
I want to be clear. I wasn't saying we shouldn't meet, but only that I, I think that Susan's determination at that time would make the most sense to me. So that we're not micromanaging nor, you know, she, she's going to have to be a bit flexible as the state continues to make changes. And so that's why I thought we should put it in her hands. Not that we should not meet.
Great.
Thank you. I feel like I have my direction on that. I do want to talk to, I promised the community, I would talk a little bit about next year and what it's looking like. We did a survey of distance learning students a few weeks ago to ask the families what they were looking at for this year and moving forward into next year. And so you've seen basically the adjustments we're making for this year already. For next year, for the distance learning students, we had approximately, well, not approximately, we had exactly six students wishing to, parents stating that they wish to continue distance learning next year. So that, of course, would direct me and we had over 65% of those on distance learning respond to that. So it's a pretty good measure of what the community is looking at. So with that, my intent would be to move forward with fully implementing onsite learning next year, starting in the fall, definitely. And taking that burden of Zoom instruction off of the classroom teachers so that they can focus on the majority of students that are on site. Looking for an option, potentially Rachel and I are reaching out to some, some individuals we know from independence, the independent study realm that we were wondering, maybe a retired teacher that could do that as a part, as some part-time work and focus on that. So looking at some of those options, I really do not have a full-time teacher to dedicate to that or even to give part of their instructional time to. So trying to figure out how to do that, but we do want to attempt to continue to serve those six or so students who really feel more comfortable with staying on distance learning. Also knowing that there, that as the community continues to open and if all of the shots get in place for youth and so on, that even that may reduce down further. So not wanting to put a lot of energy into a program that may or may not be, be needed next year. So definitely doing the work to see how to serve that, but knowing that our real focus will be on bringing kids back on campus next year. So that is my update on next year. And if there's any questions on that, I might be happy to take them now.
Miss Sayah, you didn't have your hand up. You just were kind of waving, right? Like a scratch. Okay. Okay. Any questions?
It's less of a question, just more of a, well, partially a question, I guess. And one, I just wanted to say I appreciate all the work that you're doing, Susan, and continuing to bring this for the board or in front of the board. And my question would be that we, from here forward, maintain this line item on the agenda, just, and even if it's nothing new to report, just that it's there because it's, things change so rapidly that we always have a place for you to bring us any new information as it arises and just ensure that, that it's staying in the forefront because things are so quick.
Right.
Right. Absolutely, Chelsea.
Great idea.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we already did the faculty report. The council's going to go into closed session now and we will report out what we find, what we, what happens in closed session. But we will need to, to adjourn to a closed session item at this time, please. Monica, you're on mute. Thank you. We're back in main session and no action was taken in closed session. That is our report out. So now we were going to move to item 6.1, Executive Director's Report.
Okay, so some of these things have already been reported on, so I'll just share those that haven't. First, you always like me to talk about the favorite moments that we share. The first one's from kindergarten, singing nibble, nibble, nibble goes the mouse in my heart. And then with a Valentine mouse puppets in their hand, the kindergarteners just sweet. And then one little cherub says, my mouse just farted. And then from a sixth grade class every day, I asked my students a would you rather question for the day. Last week it was, would you rather be a land animal or a sea animal? And many ideas. And then finally, one says, humans are temporary, pigeons are forever. Just, you know, one of those things that rolls off a sixth grader's tongue, makes us laugh. And then a student told me that, not me, but the person reporting, she was like Rapunzel because she'd finally let down her hair and just sharing on materials distribution nights, we get a little silly and, and just enjoy each other's company. And then the first grades, this is with the handwork class, they're working on a sewing project, showing the layers of the earth. And then Claire also says the verse that begins in our class and talks about how the earth is our mother, one of those traditional verses. And then last week, she had a first grader ask if the earth was our mother, who is the earth's mother? So love those kind of good questions that they have. We talked about the Spanish language verse already. This morning I had our annual spring review with our authorizer, Chico Unified. This is usually a fairly big onsite meeting where they, all the heads of departments come and look at our school and walk around and see our classrooms. Well, this was a meeting of just three of us and they asked me some questions about, really about how we'd done through COVID, what we were doing, planning and doing about learning loss. You know, how many students were onsite, that sort of thing, what we were planning for, for next year. And then a lot of accolades for our work on diversity and anti racism, a lot of questions about that. Specific questions about the faculty read of. Specific questions about the faculty read of the Kendi's book. I also shared today with staff, I kept four messages in two hours, so I thought I should share it with staff. The Chico State talk that Kendi is going to do for us, the Zoom talk. So shared that and hoping that a majority of staff will attend that as well. Teacher intentions is a big thing this time of year. We get our notices and decisions out by March fifteenth so that we're matching the calendars that's required by districts. We have three, for the most part, teachers are staying where they are, kindergarten teachers where they are, other teachers moving where their class or staying in their assignments. The three big news items, Nick Myers, as he graduates, his eighth grade class will move to do games next year. Nick is particularly talented and engaging in movement in his class activities. And one of the things is we've gone through the last two or three games teachers who are, who are all traditional PE teachers. Our game is so good. Amelia? Excuse me, I am at home. And there's a very big dog going down the street, come on. Yes, I know, it's a big deal, it's a big deal, now you stay here with me.
My dog is tuning up here and your dog.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, I apologize. Yes, yes, I know, yes, you're a good girl, you're telling me all about it. Okay, where was I? So anyway, Nick will be moving to do the games position. The last couple of teachers we had have been PE teachers and very traditional and, and some of their work. And Waldorf, of course, is very different in the way it engages in games and movement and so on. So we're looking forward to a real building of that program with Nick being there. And then Jennifer, Brian Glennon, who has, has been with her class from first to fifth grade, was inspired to ask to move down to the first grade class. She's seeing, of course, a group of students that will need extra tender care as they have not had a strong kindergarten experience and wanting to hold them and help them and just feeling drawn to go back to first grade. So she will be taking first grade. Brianna Lee, who is graduating her eighth grade class, will then move back down to sixth grade and take Jennifer's class sixth through eighth. And Brianna, not to embarrass her, but she's an excellent middle school teacher and really bringing out the students' individuality and strength and community. So we're looking forward to seeing her move that. And one of the issues that I'll bring up here as well, as we look at the change from Jennifer to Brianna, is if we've been talking for a number of years about the option of splitting our loops in around fourth or fifth grade and having teachers loop either from first to fifth or first to fourth and then transition to a new teacher after that. That's been talked about because, a lot because of the curriculum in middle school gets much deeper and is a lot harder to hold on to through those last three years. And also just some of the needs for change, a number of the Waldorf charter schools have gone to this kind of model, so we're looking at some of them. And this is really a sort of a difference between the private Waldorf schools and public Waldorf schools because of the inclusion of the common core work that the public Waldorf schools do. So it changes the curriculum a little bit. And so we wanted to look at this and honor it, so we'll be talking further about that over this year and looking at how things work with Brianna's class and that transition. And, and we wanted to try it out once first too. So there's a lot of different things that go into that, so that's an important piece. Final thing on this list is the full day kindergarten. I've looked at it, I presented it to, to finance committee, the costs versus the, the positives versus the pros versus the cons, the pros definitely win. So we'll be looking at that more as we go through the budget process over the next two months. The last thing I didn't get on here and I wanted to share is that we did have a Waldorf discussion with a Waldorf mentor and teacher from the Washington area who has offered to speak with us about the use of fairy tales in the lower grades. His expertise is definitely in the area of Waldorf and how we use it. But what I loved in talking to him was his focus of making sure that we aren't doing things out of dogma or out of tradition, but because it, they truly meet the needs of the students today. So looking forward to that discussion, and that's actually Friday, starts at four to five thirty and I need to ask Alex to send, to set up a Zoom meeting for that. So that'll go out again in the parent, I mentioned it last weekend. Yes, and it's a quick turnaround, but it's an issue that we really want to get addressed. And so I'll get something out again in parent square tomorrow. So that's the report.
Fantastic. Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Is it possible for board members to attend the fairy tale?
Absolutely, please.
Alice is going to send us a link.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? Thank you for doing that, Susan.
I had a question about the full day kindergarten. So if, if this is something that we can do budget-wise, would we then advertise that? Or, you know, do we, I mean, I think that's going to be a big pull to the school to have a full day kindergarten.
Yes, we, we've started this week to talk to those parents who have already signed up for kindergarten and let them know, a number of them who went through tours recently, I let them know we were considering that, so they've been waiting to find out. So look, we're, we're beginning to do that and we'll reach out to the community. One of the things that I became aware of over the last year or so, when I looked at our drop in enrollment in kindergarten, was that our drop in enrollment coincided with the increase to full day kindergartens in two of the other charters in Chico. So needing to move back to be, to have that and to be able to look at what we've done here in the past and what we can still do, still honoring the fact that those parents that want part day, we would still be able to offer it to them. But also being able to offer full day to those who need that.
That was going to be my next question, if we would offer both. Well, as a parent with an incoming kindergartner, I think it's awesome, I'm really glad you guys are doing that work. It's, it's a great addition to the school.
Okay, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank, any other questions or comments about the executive director's report? Okay, then the next thing is to adjourn the meeting and to announce our next meeting will be Tuesday, April twentieth at six PM. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
All your faces, so are we going to be in face to face on the twenty-sixth or what?
Yes, we'll plan on a, an in-person board meeting on the twenty-sixth.
All right, all right.
On the twenty-sixth or the twentieth?
Whatever the next day is.
On the twenty. I'm going to show up six days late. Thank you, everybody.
Bye. Thank you.